Can you all hear me? Hello.
Hi. Something happened with the, uh, with the camera. I'm just, we're just getting the camera fixed and up.
But can you all hear me?
Yeah, we can, you can be heard. We can't speak to you until we get the cameras up, okay?
Okay, it's five twenty-eight.
I know, good, bye.
Hello, I'm here.
Can you hear him?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, good. So Janice is there? I heard Cora's voice. Cora, you there?
Yes, I am.
I just talked to the room and they're having problems with the camera or something, so.
Yeah, I was wondering what was happening because I can't see anybody.
I can see them, but they're frozen.
I can't see anybody.
Can you see Janice?
I can't see anybody. The screen is black.
Oh. I can see Janice, I can see the room, I can see Patrick's picture.
Oh, yeah, I can see him now that I moved the camera.
How about that?
Once I slid it over, yeah, then I can see him.
Exactly. In the room, I know Jack is in the room and Gretchen's in the room and Chase and I think Julianne, so those four and us three, we have a quorum, that's good.
Reggie, I'm here as well, this is Cecily.
Oh, good. Is there, um, um, report from IDA today?
Uh, just remarks.
Okay, but I'll call it you.
Okay.
Hi, David. Oh, so you can hear me, good. Are we up and running? Can we start? I think we have a quorum. Could someone give me a thumbs up as to whether we can start? Can you all hear me?
Reggie, is your volume up in your computer?
My volume is up and people other, uh, Janice and Cora can hear me just fine. I need someone to tell me something. Let me try on the phones. So Janice, you can still hear me?
Yes, I can.
And IFL interpreter, you can hear me? And Cora, you can hear me? And anybody in the room hear me?
I was on mute. Yes, I can hear you.
Great. So the problem is the people in the room.
Best volume.
Sorry?
Cora has the best volume.
Oh. I can try to speak louder, is that better? Julianne? Is that better? I don't know what to do.
Not better. Start the meeting now. I think you can hear me. We can start the meeting now.
Okay, but can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good, great. So, um, the meeting will come to order. The time is, uh, five thirty-three PM on Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I'm wearing a red shirt. I will now call the roll. When you hear your name, please answer present. Cora? Cora?
Here, here, I'm here.
Amy.
Trying to get off the phone.
Julianne?
Present.
Demetrius? Jack?
Present.
Cecily?
Present.
Janice?
Present.
Chase?
Present.
Kimber? Carla? Hector?
Present.
Gretchen? Gretchen? Gretchen is in the room, isn't she?
Present.
Thank you. Our quorum is present. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session and is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government at opengovoffice@dc.gov. Notice of the meeting was posted in the DC Register, on the Commission's website, dc dot, dcarts dot dc dot gov, and on the DC Office of Open Governance Central Meetings Calendar at open dash dc dot gov. The meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. A number of our colleagues are in the Commission's office building in Washington DC, at two hundred High Street Southeast, and a few like myself are joining remotely using Zoom platform. The meeting is live streamed on the Commission's YouTube channel, and electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will, I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their dreams, hopes, and energy to make in the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Katchank and the P'katawe people. We pay respects to the elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please ju, please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Is there any objection to the agenda that was previously circulated? Here, no objection, the agenda stands as above. Good evening and welcome to everyone. My apologies for not being there in person, but, uh, technology hopefully will be kind if we can make this happen today. Um, I grant the artist spotlight. It's Kim Roberts, presenting for Jewish American Heritage Month. Kim Roberts? Is Kim Roberts with us?
One moment, I need to promote them.
Let's see, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Ah, terrific. Thank you all. Um, so my name is Kim Roberts. I am a poet and a literary historian whose, uh, research centers on writers from Washington DC. Uh, I went back and looked it up. I got my first DC Commission on the Arts grants in nineteen ninety-two, thirty-two years ago. Uh, and by my count, I have been the recipient of twenty-four project grants and fourteen individual artist grants in those thirty-two years. I also volunteered for the, um, commission. I served three consecutive years as a panelist for what were then known as the City Arts Grants, the forerunner to the, the PEF Grants. Um, the project grants that I've gotten from the DC Commission on the Arts have allowed me to pay other poets to participate in such projects that I have initiated as, um, the Literary Journal I founded in two thousand, Beltway Poetry Quarterly, uh, the Poet in Residence Program at the Arts Club of Washington, and DC Pride Poem a Day. I don't know if you can see this little, uh, which, um, uh, this will be our third June, uh, posting a different short video every day featuring a different queer, uh, DC poet. Uh, the individual artist grants that I've gotten have funded my time to research and write books on DC's literary history and have supported my own poems. I have in that time published, uh, six books, individual books of poetry. I'm gonna just hold up the covers, go through this as quickly as I can. My latest book is called Corona Crown, and it came out the end of last year. Uh, I have also written two books about, um, uh, the history of, uh, DC's literary communities. One was a, uh, book about the history of spoken word, and one is a book of literary walking tours of Washington DC, um. And I've published also two anthologies. It's a lot of books, it's ten books. Uh, Full Moon on K Street was a collection of poems by DC authors about specific places in DC, and By Broad Potomac Shore, uh, was an anthology, or is an anthology, of early DC poets, poets before, uh, the advent of modernism, some of whom their stories are less, less told, less well-known. Um, I'm so glad to be able to express my gratitude to you directly. Um, I can truly say that the DC Commission on the Arts has changed my life as an artist. It is, uh, without doubt, the single most important, um, uh, organization, uh, to me as a, uh, professional artist. Um, when, uh, I was, uh, invited to come talk to you, Edward Daniels suggested that I could give some feedback, uh, or some suggestions. Um, and I would just like to say that I love that the criteria for getting grants not only awards excellence in the craft of writing, but also, um, awards community engagement. Which is why I hope the community, the commission goes back to a tiered system of grants, rather than giving an equal amount to all grantees as was done last year. I think the tiered grants encourage artists to develop leadership within the literary community. Um, I know I only have a very short period of time, but I wanted to include at, at least a tiny taste of literature in this and not just talk at you. I'm gonna read you a very short poem. It is a love poem that I wrote to my girlfriend. It's called "The Stack on Your Side of the Bed." Seven back issues of New Scientist, cellphone unattached next to its charger, box of tissues tangled of silver rings, pieces of clamshell worn talisman smooth, paperback with a bookmark stuck on the same page, an e-reader in a lime green wrapper, last Sunday's crossword half-filled in, a froth of loose bills pulled from pockets, reading glasses with a tortoiseshell frame, the red eyeglass case that's always empty, lip gloss, orange plastic water glass, little chaos, little planet, part on the floor, part on the table, on your side of the bed, it's all malarkey. Ignore that flummery. Sweetheart, come into the middle where things get serious. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for being with us so long and for all the work you do. And we are hearing you on the tiered grants, uh, point of view. Others have expressed that concern as well. Uh, there certainly was logic behind what we did, who we did, but with this input, we have to reconsider, so thank you for that.
Thank you. All right.
Take care. Uh, moving on to our public comment portion, we have a few individuals sign up for public comment this evening. The commission welcomes your comments. They are very important to us. Please note the comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your remarks to the chair. Note that we will not be engaging in dialogue at this time. The purpose of this agenda item is to use the public to inform us, the commission, about your views. If members of the public have factual questions, staff will be glad to follow up via email. When I call your name, you may begin your comments. Jackie Carter from the Children's Legacy Theater, are you here?
One moment. There is someone on the phone. I will try to see if that's me. I don't think Jackie's with us.
Um, Tabitha Jacques.
Give me one moment, I'll get Tabitha to set up.
I see Tabitha Jacques.
Okay, give me just a minute. This is the interpreter speaking, so I can pin her. Okay. Hello. My name is Tabitha Jacques, and I work at Gallaudet University. And I'm the Director of Placement. I do a lot of art culture. And I'm always looking to apply different grants. Um, looking to apply for different grants. We are a university, but we're also a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. So we do qualify for various grants. And some grants we don't qualify for. So we try to get what we can and manage our finances as we can. And make sure that the requirements are, um, as we need to. So that's one reason why I am here today. We get federal monies. But it depends on the students. And we have a very small amount of limited donations. Because our university is primarily for the deaf and hard of hearing. And so not a lot of people donate money to those organizations. For my work, art culture, we don't get hardly any funding, and we rely mostly on grants and foundations. And I talk a lot of, with artists, organizations, and they tell me to please apply for the C H H grant. But we haven't because of the weird placement, the weird area between university and five oh one C three that we find ourselves into. So the requirements, we want to align ourselves with the requirements. Because we are a university that serves people with disabilities. Because the applications that are required, excuse me for just a moment, as in.
We are requesting, we are requesting that you change the requirements to serve those at the university with disabilities.
So that the university that serves people with disabilities or marginalized groups so they can be eligible and applic, um, be able to receive these funds. Thank you for your time today.
I'll put you on the side, David Markie, and perhaps you could, uh, help me with the response to this. I know that there has been some interest, um, in, uh, in grants that are focused on disabilities, et cetera. So perhaps you can clarify where we are there.
Uh, yes, I'm happy to, Reggie. Uh, so the commission has not, uh, traditionally funded universities. Uh, but I am curious to learn more about this sort of hybrid university five oh one C three status. Uh, so maybe we can continue the conversation and see where there might be a good fit for some of your programming.
Good. So yes, we'll connect you with David Markie, and we can see what's possible.
Oh, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Angela Wolston?
I don't see Angela.
Uh, Daryl Chappelle, I see Daryl is there. Daryl?
Hello, ever. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. I'm going to share my screen as well, if the host can allow me to share my screen.
You should have permission now.
Thank you so much. I greatly appreciate that. Uh, there are also written amounts remarks that have been provided, so you should have those. So good evening, Commissioner Chair, Chair Reggie Van Lee, Executive Director Aaron Myers, Commissioners, Staff, and Public. I am Daryl Chappelle, the founder of the Daryl Chappelle Foundation, a public charity headquartered in Washington DC. I last presented to the commission back in September twenty twenty-two with an introduction to our foundation, along with an origin story video. Well, thank you for providing this opportunity to share our latest work. Tonight, I will share highlights from our April twentieth Artist Talk DC number eight, which was held on September, September, oh, sorry, Saturday, April twentieth, at the Arc Black Box Theater. I will reference, uh, slides that you see on the screen. Uh, again, we are a, uh, public charity. Our mission is to empower Afro-descended artists to achieve their highest potential with a vision of artists working together and having a positive and transformative impact on their local community through art. We lead with integrity as our core value. There are five core programs. Tonight, I am happy to share with you highlights from Artist Talk DC number eight. The talk was in partnership with the Building Bridges Across the River. It was held at the Black Box Theater. We also partnered with the Black Art Today Foundation. The moderator was Andrew Jacobson, with local artists Brody and Luis De Valle.
We don't hear anything.
Okay, you weren't hearing the audio?
No, I wasn't. Perhaps others were.
There's something called music mode. Video traditionally doesn't come through well on, um, sharing screen sharing here.
Okay, let me do a backdoor appear with me one moment. Thank you for your patience.
Summarize for us what, the, the highlights of what the discussion was.
Absolutely. I, I definitely did that, uh, Commissioner. So the highlights focused on really the community artists being involved and the topic on transcending, transmuting, uh, Afro pessimism, which is a theory with regard to a sense of not having any hope in the community, a sense of really being challenged by daily life. So both artists discussed and highlighted their own personal challenges. Luis De Valle is an immigrant from Nicaragua. Uh, he traveled from Nicaragua during the civil war, and then Brody as a artist being raised in the DMV, and his own personal challenges, accepting himself as an individual. And so that whole story was the interaction with both of the artists. A significant community involvement, and then I'll put the slides back on the screen. We also evaluated real-time the actual presentation, uh, based upon the QR code that we shared. QR code that was shared, uh, actually during the, during the, during the actual seminar. Uh, the results of those, uh, survey, there are three, uh, two basic questions, and we always open it up for any type of verbatim comments. Number one, I'm likely to recommend Artist Talk to others. Uh, on a scale of one to five, five being the highest, uh, twelve participants completed the survey. Each of the twelve said a five. The second question, Artist Talk was a good use of my time. Again, scale to one to five, five being the highest. Twelve of those who completed the survey gave it a five. And then the richness is in the verbatim comments. Excellent Artist Talk. I won't read through all of these, I'll just read through a couple. Uh, thank you for Artist Talk number eight. It was amazing. I skip along. I love the question that were asked and the opportunity for the audience to ask questions. That's a consistent feedback theme. It's not just the artists talking, it's the Q and A segment, which we open it up at the end, at least twenty minutes of Q and A. And then the last comment, a wonderful event. Uh, the Daryl Chappelle Foundation has applied for a project events and festival grants for physical year twenty twenty-five. And again, we're even more convinced that these type of programs, uh, are considered a value add in the district. Uh, thank you so much for your time this evening, and I really appreciate, uh, having this opportunity to present to you.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for your ongoing partnership with the Arts Commission.
Thank you.
I may not pronounce this right. Sobedi Vidal?
Not present.
Mary Belcher? I see Mary Belcher, yes.
One moment.
That's there. Just need to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to read from a written statement because I'm more of a writer than a presenter. Um, my name's Mary Belcher, and I've earned my living as a painter in the district for twenty-seven years. You can see my work at marybelcher.com. Two of my paintings were included in the Legacy Civil Rights at Sixty, sixty jurid exhibition in February. In the summer of twenty twenty-three, I filled out the application forms and submitted images for the exhibit. Then I needed a clean hands certificate from OTR, which was required before my work would even be considered by DCCAH. It took more than a dozen emails and calls to OTR, and then I turned to the taxpayer advocates office before I was certified to have clean hands, which had been withheld without explanation. When I was accepted into the exhibit in late October, I had to get a fresh certificate, and it was even worse. After unsuccessful calls to OTR, I again turned to the taxpayer advocate who had me fill out several new tax forms, even though I owed no taxes, but still no certificate. As a last resort, I sought help from my council member. After all that, OTR issued another temporary certificate, just so I could accept my acceptance into the exhibition. I don't know how many calls and emails others made on my behalf, but I made more than forty calls and emails trying to get clean hands. Any joy I felt about being accepted into the exhibit was pretty much gone. The final straw came in January twenty four, when DCC H. DCC AH issued purchase orders and told artists to enter information into a new city contracting system to receive our awards. I watched tutorials, read instructions, and finally had to have a tech guy lead me through it. Then I was told by DCC H that I didn't have clean hands. At that point, my brain stopped. I couldn't go through it again. I informed DCC AH that I would withdraw my paintings from the exhibit. Because I couldn't meet the demands of the awards process. To his credit, Executive Director Aaron Myers estimated person. So I went to his office with an open mind, but prepared to take my paintings home. He persuaded me to leave them in the exhibit and promised that I would receive the award without further action on my part. In fact, I told him I was psychologically unable to take further action. I haven't received my thousand dollar award. With so much money passing through DCC AH, why doesn't it have its own disbursement office? Who decided that arts grants recipients are contractors selling goods and services to the city? How can DCC AH demon artists work award worthy and then throw us on the mercy of DC's ponderous financial system? I tried to exercise the one sliver of agency that I had left when I sought to remove my paintings from the exhibit. I now regret that I didn't, just as I regret having to tell you this story. What should have been a highlight in a long career turned into a time consuming, dispiriting low. Due to a broken DCC AH system. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, I, I am really disheartened by the situation you went through. Um, and I would like to follow up personally with you and with our grants group. Some of this is perhaps out of our hands with the city. But some of this perhaps is not, and I promise you I'll get to the bottom of this.
Thank you very much for your time and, and thanks in advance for anything you can do.
Thank you. Um, that concludes our public comments. Uh, I want to talk about the budget hearing as an intro to the executive director's report. The commission has completed its hearing process for this budget season for fiscal year twenty twenty five. The council of the district of Columbia, Columbia voted last week on the committee report and will vote May twenty ninth for final budget passage. I want to thank Director Myers and our resource allocation manager, Brandon Saunders, for accompanying me in the hot seat during the questioning. Uh, both from the chairman and other council members during the hearing. I also want to thank my fellow commissioners for their support. Uh, the executive director report will have more details on the pros and cons of the budget in that report. And with that, I'll pass it to Deputy Executive Director David Markey to give the director's report in the absence of the executive director. David?
Uh, thanks, Reggie. Good evening, everyone. My name is David Markey. I'm the deputy director, and as Reggie said, I am uh. Providing our director's report in his absence. Unfortunately, he couldn't be with us this evening. Uh, I am a white man in a blue jacket uh with gray hair, and I'm about to put on my glasses. Um, uh, first up, uh, we'd like to welcome a brand new hire to the agency. Kayla Williams has joined us as a grants management specialist. Uh, as of May fifth, uh, we have also uh issued uh offers to two other new staffers. One will be an assistant registrar who will help oversee the very large public art collection we have. Uh, and then also a public art manager, and our hope is that they will both join us within the next four to six weeks. Uh, the DC Music Census went live on April tenth in twenty twenty four and will close on May twenty second, which is this come, uh, coming Wednesday. Currently, more than twenty one hundred music industry professionals have completed the survey, and we continue to strive for many more before the twenty second. The DC Music Census. Um, information about the uh, the DC area music economy to assist the district and community in making informed, data-driven decisions to support the music ecosystems. If you are a musician or work in the industry in any way, we want to hear from you. Please go to www.dcmusiccensus.org and complete the census today. It only takes ten minutes to complete and may be done on your cell phone. The DC Music Census is part of a national cohort of cities organized uh by Sound Music Cities that include Baltimore, Cleveland, New Orleans and Minneapolis. Once the DC Music Census is complete, we will then prepare to launch the theater census. Uh, as Reggie mentioned, uh, we had our uh budget oversight hearing uh several weeks ago now. Um, uh, where the council of the committee uh voted on Chairman Mendelson's recommendations uh for the commission's budget for next year. Um, one piece of good news is that the council voted to move the five million dollars that is currently in our FY twenty four budget, the current year, to FY twenty five. Uh, hopefully that will shore up some of the um, the shortfall in the proposed budget. Uh, Chairman Mendelson also wants to eliminate two non-grant manager FTEs. We had put a total of seven new FTEs in the budget for FY twenty five. Um, uh, and but that vote will be finalized, as Reggie mentioned, on Wednesday, May twenty ninth. Uh, the good news is that there were no additional cuts uh to the CAH budget proposed outside of the mayor's recommendations. An ideal scenario would have been for the council to make the agency whole by replenishing the eight plus million dollars in funding proposed for elimination in the FY twenty five budget. Uh, the council did not do that, and we are aware that this decrease will hamper some of the agency's progress and force cuts in grant amounts and public events. Still, we at CH will do our level best to minimize these challenges and strive to keep the funding for our grantees as stable as possible. Um, I am missing a, oh, there, I can read from the screen. Um, uh, as our agency grows and the number of full-time employees grows, we are moving forward. Uh, with acquiring a second suite in our current building uh for the grants department to move to. It's the formerly the Office of Contract and Film, Music and Entertainment Space. Um, uh, we had hoped to move. But it looks as if the renovation of the space will not be available, uh, or so the space will not be available to us until towards the end of September. And then finally, uh, we have another grant, round of grants that will launch on June fifth. Thanks, Chase. Uh, the Artist Fellowship Grant, uh, the Arts and Humanities Education Grant, the Field Trips Experiences Grant, and the Capital Projects Grant. And as I said, those grants are scheduled to open on June fifth, and more information can be found on our uh, in the Grants Department report. Uh, and then finally, um, some of you are aware that we engaged in a survey to identify space needs of uh local artists and uh arts organizations. And we garnered more than a hundred and thirty respondents who provided information on space barriers, space need requirements. And the part of the district in which they were most interested in acquiring space. Um, all of the respondents had no preference for Ward um as a desired space, um, uh, which was good news. Uh, and the survey has been sent, or the results of the survey has been sent, have been sent over to the deputy mayor for planning and economic development uh for their review. And that concludes the director's report.
Thank you, David. Questions for the commissioners? There's a lot in there.
I have a question. Hi, this is Chase Magiano, a white male with a mostly white collared shirt. Um, with birds on it. Um, so I just have one question about the, about Chairman Mendelson's uh proposal to eliminate two of the non-grant manager FTEs. Um, are, does, I'm confused with all of the numbers and proposals going back and forth. If, if the proposal that's sort of out there right now ends up being the final. Um, does that mean we will see an increase, a decrease, or net zero of grant managers specifically? Because I know the grant managers has been the hot topic.
As, as I understand, and Gretchen perhaps pictured as well, what I think has been approved is four additional grant managers and one additional resource allocation manager.
That is correct.
Other questions?
Hello, I'm sorry, my, my microphone's really loud. Um, this is Julianne Brienza. I am a white female of Irish Italian descent. And I'm wearing a blue shirt with a dress. Um, but you can't see the dress because I'm sitting down. Um. I'm just wanting to ask when we will be, as commissioners, receive a report on our strategic plan at the meetings as our bylaws state that is supposed to be reported on. Um, what, can we get a status update on the strategic plan? I know, I know our director is not here today. But we are inching closer and closer to the end of our fiscal year, and my understanding is that we will be. The strategic plan has to be done in October, and it is almost June. Thank you.
Uh, I can provide an update on that. Um, so we have been working with the Office of Contracts and Procurement. Uh, and our director, Director Meyer, has been uh meeting with a handful of prospective um contractors. Uh, where we are at the moment is there's a threshold, a budget threshold with the Office of Contracts and Procurement. And if it goes over the threshold, we, we go one route, and if it's under the threshold, we go another. So, but we are working on it with uh the Resource Allocation Officer. And so hopefully we'll have more information in the next couple of weeks, uh, including a timeline.
Let's make sure that's an agenda item for our next meeting.
Will do.
Cover it here. Thank you, Julianne. Other questions? As I said, I know there was a lot in that report, so I want to make sure commissioners have any questions, and we at least try to address them. Other questions? If not, thank you. Thank you again, David. We'll go on to the finance report, and I see Kimber's here, and I think Brandon is there as well. Kimber?
Hi, good evening. I'm Kimber Lovett-McKee. I am the um treasure. I am a African American female with brown hair, and I'm wearing a white top today. And glad to be with you guys on camera. Not always on camera, so it's good to, to see so many of your faces. So I'm excited, but we have Brandon, who is with us. I think this is our second commission meeting, Brandon, as our um resource officer. We've had a chance to meet with him with the finance committee as well. So you notice in our finance report, that was in everyone's package, uh, we have sort of the high level summary, but we have um a lot more detail, I think, in administrative. In terms of how things are broken down within that segment of our budget. And so I think that gives people just a little bit more detail as we continue to really make sure, in the spirit of transparency, that we continue to provide more detail around our overall expenditures. And so I really wanted Brandon, I know it's just been, I don't think, a full um month since we've all been together, to just kind of give a high level overview here. We've heard a lot sort of in the budget cycle. Uh, from both Chairman Lee and in the executive director update, but I want to just sort of highlight where we are as we uh kind of close on in on this fiscal year and await sort of our final approval on the next budget. So Brandon, anything that you specifically want to highlight in here from just really the last three weeks or so?
Well, uh, in terms of the actual numbers and dissemination of the grants, there's been about a point five percent. Um, just percent of available budget that's been disseminated, so not really a large amount as we starting to really close out on the overall process um for this, for this cycle. Uh, generally, uh, there will be a little bit more action, but of course, there was only three weeks between meetings uh from the previous one. Excuse me, that was about five weeks. We also talked in just in more detail as well about the current FY twenty four uh spending. In terms of preparing for FY twenty five, but also, um, I, as a new resource allocation officer, of course, um, and still, of course, gaining the um lay of the land and. Making sure that we're pretty much in compliance, making sure that we're spending efficiently, making sure that we're allocating all of our resources. Um, towards the best of our priorities and uh mission and vision moving forward. Um, so more to come, of course, on that, as well as discussion in terms of specific procurement. Um, policies and strategies around uh like our sponsorships, partnerships, um, more to come, um, of course, on all of that as well. But those are just a few things that we talked about in uh this week's finance meeting.
Thank you, Brandon. Any questions?
Any questions? Not a lot of movement, uh, but just in case you still have questions, I'm going to cover them. Thank you, Kimber. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you.
Deputy Gretchen?
Hello, everyone. I'm Gretchen Wharton, white female. Not sure what color the hair is today. Let's try platinum, maybe. Um, black glasses. Thank you for joining us this evening. In terms of the grants committee report for today, our general operating support east grants and projects, events and festivals, which we call PEP, programs are all closed. They were closed on April the eleventh, the eleventh, and right now our grants team is currently vetting them and getting applications in. For those who are, want to be panelists, for those of you who are on the phone, who have not been panelists and who want to be, please let us know. Um, contact Terrell. Please volunteer. We need all the panelists we can get, and we'd really appreciate your help on that. For FY twenty five, summer grants opening, our FY twenty five Arts and Humanities Education Project, Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program. Field trip experiences and capital projects grant programs will open on Wednesday, June the fifth. Please mark your calendars. And will close on Tuesday, June, July the ninth. Again, opening on Wednesday, June fifth and closing on Tuesday, July ninth. Arts and Ed, Arts and Humanities Education Project is a mission, um, excuse me. Furthers the commission, the CAH's mission by encouraging progress. In the arts and humanities in the District of Columbia by supporting nonprofit arts, humanities, arts education and service organizations. Who significantly contribute to the District of Columbia as a world-class cultural capital. The grants project types include in-school projects, out-of-school time projects, professional development projects, older adult projects. Please keep track of the dates. We really want a lot of applications in for these grants. Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program. Furthers CAH's mission by encouraging progress in the arts and humanities in the District of Columbia. By supporting qualified individual artists and humanities practitioners who significantly contribute to the District of Columbia as a world-class cultural capital. HFP recognizes the impact of individual artists and humanities practitioners within the district. And supports the vitality that those individuals bring to the local community. If I'm reading too fast and you can't see this, it's all on our website, so please make sure you go there and check everything out. The grant opportunity encourages progress in the arts and humanities by sustaining, highlighting and elevating. The accomplishments of individual district-based artists and humanities practitioners. And you can see the list of the disciplines that are included on the screen, and again, all of this is on our website. FTE, Field Trip Experiences. FTE furthers CAH's mission by encouraging progress in the arts and humanities in the District of Columbia. By supporting nonprofit arts, humanities, arts education and service organizations who significantly contribute to the District of Columbia as a world-class cultural capital. The FTE grants program supports the cost of field trips, professional development opportunities for classroom educators. And or pre-post field trip workshops for students. Funding may also be allocated to necessary personnel support for the planning and implementation of the program. And then the capital projects grant. It furthers our mission by encouraging progress in the arts and humanities in the District of Columbia by supporting nonprofit arts, humanities and arts education. And service organizations that contribute to District of Columbia as world-class cultural capital. Supports organizations that own or rent facilities, intend to own facilities. Or seek capital project support for permanent property, technology, equipment or digital asset. I know this is a lot, so I really encourage everybody to go to the website and read each component so that you know what. and read each component so that you know what you're applying for and that your applications reflect such. The grants team is excited to announce new virtual office hours for grantees and applicants. Starting Monday, June 7th, our grants managers will be available to answer your specific questions about your grant or application every Monday from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Please take advantage of that opportunity. No appointment is necessary. Simply drop in during our virtual office hours, 10:00 to 11:30. While time slots are not required, we may offer them in the future to manage traffic. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that because there'll be so many of you coming to ask questions. Our virtual office hours are a great opportunity to clarify grant program requirements, discuss application details, and get help with post-award management. We look forward to connecting with you. I think, just to follow up on some things that we talked about at the last few meetings, I think we're down to about 20 grants that need to be... They've already been awarded, but you need to receive your money. Many of you have heard me say time and time again that we need more grants managers, so I'm very pleased to hear that the council's going to award us four new grants managers and a resource allocation manager, which is basically the finance person who helps get the money through. The other thing that we really need a lot more money for is a system to automate our grant system. That will help a lot. And it's not as simple as it sounds because it has to integrate with DIPS, which is the city system. So all of these things taken into perspective are the reasons that we really implore you to talk with your council members and whomever you may speak to to encourage our full funding. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone? And I'll just reiterate Gretchen said I'll encourage our constituents on the phone to go on to the website and really read in detail what was presented, so that you understand, and come back to us if you have questions, especially during these open office hours we put in place as well. So thank you for that. I think we have an idea committee comment or statement?
Yep, I'm here. Thank you. Thank you so much, Reggie, for the opportunity report on the idea committee. My name is Cecily Habimana, and I'm a black female with black hair and a turquoise top, joining via Zoom. Since our last meeting, a few weeks ago, I met with Claritha Landry, the Chief Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Officer, and we're excited that IDEA Committee continues to make progress toward the completion of the 44 recommendations as determined by the Racial Equity Task Force. The full committee, we're planning to meet within the next three weeks, and the IDEA Committee will... We are planning, I'm sorry, we are planning to meet as a full committee within the next three weeks. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Clara, just to give a little bit more details on the progress of the department. So is Clara there?
I am. I'm here.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you, Commissioner Habimana. Good early evening to all of the commissioners, fellow teammates and staff, and our constituents from the greater Washington area. My name is Claritha Landry. Pronouns are she, her, hers, and I identify as an African-American female. I am wearing a tan-colored light jacket with a very light yellow scarf. As Commissioner Habimana has shared, that we continue to make progress against our 44 recommendations, as well as making sure that we start to establish ourselves as a presence throughout the community. As has been mentioned a few times on this call, we are not just seeing DC as an area that exemplifies the best of the best from DC, but we're also a global attraction for other artists to emulate and follow, and to share our best practices when it comes to the multitude of artistic disciplines with our international colleagues. And in that same spirit, the IDEA Department had an opportunity to represent the commission to separate international platforms and events since our last commissioners' monthly meeting. First, we were able to join the French Ambassador Laurent Bily as part of the cultural exchange program known as Villa Abatine with the Embassy of France for a commemorative celebration in honor of the 80th anniversary of D-Day. This particular commemoration had six World War II veterans who served on the beaches of Normandy, ranging in age from 99 years old to 103 years old, and who could do a shuffle faster than I could, and share incredible stories of their selfless service and their courageous attributes protecting our freedoms. We have a few veterans, including myself, that are a part of the Commission on the Arts and Humanities. So it was a great opportunity, and we were very honored to be able to represent the commission in that way, knowing that this is an area of interest that we would like to explore even more as a commission, as a part of our inclusive inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility platform, so that we are engaging more with veterans in the greater Washington area. And this really, it lives at the intersection of art storytelling and military service. Secondly, we were able to spend the evening at the residence of the Ambassador of Belgium, celebrating Europe Day, which is on May 9th. This was part of an awards recognition ceremony for the Transatlantic Bridge Awards. This award celebration acknowledges important contributions to the transatlantic relationship that the EU, the European Union, has with the United States. This honors the signing of the Schuman Declaration in 1950 that actually established the European Union, and it was hosted by the Ambassador of the European Union to the United States, Madame Ambassador Yovita Nezshiani, and distinguished guests who commemorated the strength of the US-EU or EU-US partnership through commerce, leadership, academia, and humanities. There were three recipients of the transatlantic awards, as well as past recipients that were there, and there was a great conversation with different, at the formal part of the dining experience and the event that evening, which each table having a representative across the 27 states that are part of the EU, and each of the tables were identified with some element of diversity, equity, inclusion, to curate and create great and meaningful conversations across the table and to make lasting memories and continue the partnership beyond that evening. Thank you. If there are no other questions, appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions from anyone? Good. Thank you, both Clara and Cecily. By way of special committees, Chase, do you have an update for the foundation report?
Anyone? Oh, there we are. Just a brief update. Again, my name is Chase Magiano, white male, wearing a white shirt with birds on it and blue glasses. The foundation committee met recently, and I'll just share two takeaways from our most recent meeting and then what we're going to be planning for the future. We, as a committee, reviewed and scored a list of impact areas that a possible arts foundation in DC could and should consider. These impact areas were based on feedback from previous years' stakeholder engagement initiatives conducted by CAH, also recent stakeholder initiatives surrounding the Art Week effort, as well as conversations with other funders around the country. The committee condensed the priorities into three main areas, and I'll just quickly state those: Supporting a large art festival to bring more people and awareness to the city; funding artists and organizations who don't receive needed resources from traditional sources; and acting as a convener for the artist and philanthropic community. So those are sort of the three buckets that we are kind of thinking about right now as a committee for this foundation. We discussed a few specifics of how a possible foundation should or should or should not operate, and we reiterated it to each other and publicly that the foundational requirement of this entity not cannibalize current giving for organizations and artists, but instead inspire new giving or additional support from historic funding sources. And then we ended the meeting by talking about what the next steps are for this committee in relation to the greater commission. And so we will be drafting a set of recommendations for how a foundation could be most impactful for the DC arts community. We expect to draft and revise it over the summer months and present to the full commission and to the public by or before the October commission public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Good. My Art Week 2025 report is even shorter. Basically, the committee is meeting next week, and we're going to be putting plans in place to move ahead, both with the planning of a September 2025 event, but also something this September. What can we do to soft-launch, begin to initiate engaging around this? There's a lot of energy around us doing something this year, and so we've got to think through what is possible that can be done well. It will be small, but it will be a start to what we think will be a bigger production in 2025. Any questions on the Art Week 2025 program? If not, I'll say as we enter the summer, we're quite busy across all the committees and staff, as you see. I want to continue to thank the staff and the commissioners for our engagement around the important work that we're doing on behalf of the DC Arts and Humanities Communities. There be no further business. The next meeting of the commission will be held Monday, June 17th, 2024, at 5:30 p.m. The time is 6:27 p.m., and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.